Be ready to start. Let's start with weather.
...to apply in the United States of America to two Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, the first thing I'd like to do is mention that... I'd like to apologize to our business administrator and our Ringe Budget Advisor that the calendar published on the website said we would be meeting at 6:30 tonight. That is the budget development calendar. However, in scheduling the meeting, we did change it to 7 o'clock because we had a request for a public meeting, sorry, not a public meeting, but a private meeting with a private citizen during non-public. And we honored that request, and that's why we changed the agenda. So if those of you who didn't look on the agenda, you wouldn't have known that until... All right, that's number one. And number two, I'd like to welcome our student representative. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Would you like to just say hello and tell us what grade you're... Sorry, could you tell us your name once again?
Yeah, my name is Maddie Delgado, and I'm a senior at Cleveland Middle High School.
Nice, nice, okay. Very good. Have you been here the whole four years?
Yep.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Yeah.
So are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to request?
Not without the minutes from consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. We shall do so.
I'd like to pull the facilities fees out of the consent agenda.
Okay, Charlie, that was the facility waivers?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll remove the minutes and the facility waivers from the consent agenda. All right, very good. And that will be coming up next after the student representative report and the superintendent's report. Did they tell you that we're going to ask you to do a report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have that in, so...
So if you'd like to tell us whatever you'd like, we're happy to hear from you.
Yeah, so in the past few weeks of this current school year, one of the most beneficial things that I've seen throughout is that there's a lot of structure between admin and teachers and students. And I think a lot of people have benefited from this, especially students, and maybe not some people that I know personally, but there's a lot of people who may not thrive in the structure that we've had in the past, and sometimes going to school is really hard for them. But I know there's a lot of resources that have been put out there at teachers and admin, and I've noticed that it's really helped a lot. There is one struggle that I've just seen amongst students and some teachers is the integration of Otis, and it's something that I think they may need more instruction on. There is a lot of resources for parents, and I know teachers are being taught about it, and everybody, it's still a big learning process, but I think the people who are most struggling with it right now are learners.
People most struggling with it are the...
Are the learners, especially seniors, because we've had a switch from full classroom above the school, and then we switched to Otis and the one through four grading system. And there's been a lot of stress with the whole college process for those who want to continue their education, because it's completely different from what we've seen outside of our school. So I think they might benefit from more resources and talking to different guidance counselors and maybe college admissions officers to learn how that can incorporate after school.
And just to kind of go along to some of the struggles, just if I'm correct, having before been the one through hundred, zero to hundred percentage, and now you're at a one through four, and where most teachers would say there are three, because you don't have the average, that's looking at 86?
Yeah, which is completely different than...
Completely different.
Probably still.
I agree with this. Good to bring that up.
Yes, thank you. And it's nice to hear from the trenches. We know that the transition to Otis is a challenge. I think it's important, but we know it's a challenge, and it's going to be more challenging for some people than for Otis. And by the way, please feel free to continue when issues like that... All right, does anybody have any other questions for... Okay. Mr. Duncan, should we say something to our student representative about how they're welcome? She's welcome to stay as long as she's comfortable?
I told her that we usually would get out here in like, I don't know, 9:00, 9:30 or something like that, so...
So you don't have to stay?
Yeah, we've had a conversation, and certainly sometimes we're faster, sometimes we're a little slower, so there are some interesting conversations on the agenda you might be interested in seeing. But by all, yeah, you are able to leave and not feel badly if you want to, so...
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so now we're ready for the superintendent's report, and we're all looking forward to see what you might have for us tonight.
Well, I talked to the school board a lot on Saturday, so after three or so hours, I think that we have had a lot of conversation around all that we're doing. We shared some data around preschool and the fact that our learners in kindergarten who have taken their preliminary assessments on AIMS Web, AIMS Web, which is a new assessment platform, I think you may have taken N W V A tests before. We are phasing those out. We've already phased them out of the middle school and grade school, but the elementary will as well. AIMS Web is a little more focused, and it complies with the state laws around dyslexia screening and making sure that we are regularly assessing our learners to see where their growth or lack thereof at times is happening within reading and mathematics. And what we did find was that we've, over the last two years, in part because of some... we started a process several years ago, but then we had ESER funds from COVID and from the federal government during that COVID time, that we were able to utilize some funds to fully fund what we call universal access to preschool, and for four-year-olds. For four-year-olds, we have, whatever parents, if you have a four-year-old and you want to send them into pre-K over at Jaffrey Grade School or at Ridge Memorial School, as of right now, what we found is that everyone who's wanted it has been able to get that, and it's full day, four and a half days each week. And the data that we shared on Saturday indicates that those individuals who have attended our preschool, not just our four-day-a-week preschool, well, they're both four days a week, but for full-day-a-week preschool, we also have a half-day program as well, but that they have shown by and large that they are indeed ready for kindergarten, and that matches what the national data would suggest, the research would suggest. And so we're pleased with that. We want to keep on taking, certainly finding some data and then utilizing it to be able to improve what we're doing there. For instance, one of the principles indicated that at one school, I think it was Ridge Memorial School, showed that they, their kindergartners had looked stronger on the early literacy indicators, whereas the other school, Jaffrey Grade School, was a little bit lower on those indicators but higher on the mathematics indicators. So what can we do, you know, bring those individuals together, talk about what's happening in both of their schools, and see if we can make some adjustments to make sure that all of our learners are getting all that they need. So it's good information. Other things we talked about were had to do with HVAC systems and other educational initiatives that we've been doing over the past several years. This year, just more recently, we've started to have fall athletics. And so one of the goals, I guess you could say, that we've had in the last two to three years has been to get as many individuals in our schools participating in after-school anything as much as possible, so that they're connected to our school and that they're feeling like they have the ability to be able to try new things without feeling like, oh, I'm just not good at it and no one's going to help me, you know, get better or anything like that. So if you were to go, say, to the girls' and boys' B team basketball game last week, that was happening, I think it was on Thursday, that was at Ridge Memorial School, we would see that we have quite a number of individuals who are trying out basketball, for instance, for the first time, and/or have played maybe one year, but they've never been able to really go into rec leagues or travel leagues or anything like that. This is their first experience. But how nice it is that they're getting the instruction, they're feeling like they're part of a community, they're wearing a uniform along with their classmates, and feeling like they're part of the organization, they have a sense of belonging. So building that sense of belonging has been something that we've been really striving to do in all of our areas. We've added sports, we've added other clubs and so forth, and we want to continue to be able to do that, and we have some great numbers. And either of those teams won, and that was okay, because they keep on improving. The girls' B team in particular was significantly stronger than last year. It's really great to see people growing in real time. There were also some events last week. At Jaffrey Grade School, for instance, they had a family fun night. I was able to go over there for about an hour, and so they would go, they do this annually, and they go around, the people from the community come on in, their kids come on in, and they travel from room to room, doing some STEM activities, doing some art activities. They had in the cafeteria decorating cookies, and I was able to grab one of those cookies. I did not eat the frosting, but I did have the little gingerbread person, who was not gingerbread, doesn't matter. Anyway, it was tasty. So that was good, and it was a great night, and people were just really happy, and it was wonderful, again, to go over to RMS and be able to see some of actually those kids, JGS kids over at RMS watching their brothers and sisters play, and then being able to make the connection like, oh, you're over here too, or you're over there. It's really neat to see the community kind of together and that people are participating everywhere.
Is that a quarterly or a monthly event?
That one, I think, is an annual event. I know that RMS did, I think, one, I don't know if it was their first one that they had done in a while, but they definitely had a big event last year that was their family fun night, because I was only, I got to be there about 10 or 15 minutes from the end, and there were so many people, it was just packed. And they, of course, have that nice parking lot where they, you know, everyone can fit, so it's very nice to see. They're just great events, and it's great to see parents, their kids, their teachers, all of them together in one area, just having a really good time, positive experience. I think I'll leave it at that right now.
Okay.
We're in December, and we've got a couple more weeks to go before the holiday break.
Good, thank you. One thing that I skipped over, which is, it seems we're getting good at this, is public comment. So we do have a public comment section, and any members of the public who are here... And since we're not doing a live stream tonight, it's obviously limited to the three of you here, I guess. Part of the thing, but he has a comment they'd like to make, a question they'd like to ask, is feel free...
I'd like to, sorry, Sandy, the facilities director, I'd like to welcome you to the board, so we're glad to have you.
Good, thank you, Sandy. Okay. So if there are no other public comments, then we are going to move on to our consent agenda as amended. So if somebody would like to...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And thank you, Lisa, for the second, so we have a consent and a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, then I would ask everyone to vote, signify by saying aye or no of your group.
Aye.
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 And I also voted aye, so that passes six, six-zero.
Do you mind if I make a couple statements regarding consent agenda?
No, not at all, please.
So for Maddie and anyone else in attendance, the consent agenda, there's a lot of items on there, and so rather than going through every single item, the board takes them as a kind of a group and says, hey, let's vote on all of these. If they don't feel that that's something that they can do, like Charlie pulled some information or pulled some sections out of that consent agenda, then they vote on everything that's remaining, and then they vote on whatever was pulled out individually. So for instance, Dorothy Mian, a JGS STEM teacher, so Jaffrey Grade School has a pilot program going on, pre-K through five, a STEM program, and that's been going on this year. And Dorothy, Mrs. Mian, you may know who she is and may not, she's been in the district for quite some time, and her husband must be a STEM teacher here, so you would know him. And so she had initially put her retirement in, her retirement letter in, and she has decided to stay another year to continue on with the STEM program. So that was rescinded, they pulled that back this year, and has one example of what's in consent agenda. And I'm very excited with that.
Yes, right.
It's very great that she's staying with us.
But Ruben, thank you for the explanation, because with this kind of structure or board structure like this, it's a way for us to get a bunch of things done without spending too much time on each one.
So that you can feel comfortable staying as long as you can.
That's right, okay, well, thank you, everyone. Next, our action item is petty cash increase request. Oh, yes, okay, thank you, Lisa. Since we pulled the minutes, and the waiver, we'll address them first.
I will motion to accept the waiver for the, sorry, I haven't put it back to it, blah, 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 where is it? So I will motion to accept the request to waive facility fees for the Jaffrey Police Department training on December 16th.
Good, thank you, Lisa.
I'll second that.
And thank you, Nathan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Staying? Okay, so that motion carries five, zero, with one abstention.
Move one second with that motion.
And then the minutes for October 16th? Okay, the minute for October 16th. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that from October 16th.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Charlie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstained.
Abstained.
And no opposed, is that right? So we have four in favor?
No. I was saying, when you say abstained, abstained.
Okay, so that's three abstained. Okay, very good. Okay, so now we have six of us here, three voted in favor and three abstained. That's fair, it's okay, very good. Now we'll move on to our action item, which is the petty cash increase request. So Ruben, would you like to tell us about that request?
So the petty cash increase request is for the, I don't have it in front of me right now because my computer's being used for something else, but it's for the purpose of making certain that we can pay our individuals, the officials. So Heather, oh, here we go, yeah, so Heather wrote a letter. Currently, the petty cash accounts are set for $6,000 for CHS and $3,000 for CMS. She has requested that the accounts be increased to $8,000 for CHS and $5,000 for CMS. Here now hosting more sports, and the cost of officials has also increased. The accounts are depleted in roughly three weeks, and the process to replenish the accounts takes up to two weeks. So the winter season is approximately a 14-week period. This increase will cover the winter season, so we don't have to replenish. If the accounts are not replenished in time, it backs up payments to the officials. So it's for efficiency purposes, we don't give her any more money than what is already, you know, she's already going to be using, it's just that she's able to have more upfront so she can provide the payment to the officials rather than having to mail to them.
She was always requested to ask for more.
Can we ask the business manager?
Oh, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I was going to say that these amounts are approved in the purchasing guidelines, that the board has approved, so if the board makes an action to change it, they also have to approve a change to the purchasing guidelines.
So the numbers that are currently there are in the purchasing guidelines?
That's correct.
Yes, and so...
That's usually where we would make the changes, through the purchasing guidelines, yes.
So it's a cash flow issue as opposed to any other?
That's what it sounds like, yes.
Is the motion to approve or change the...
Purchasing guidelines.
Purchasing guidelines to reflect $8,000 for CHS and $6,000 for, $5,000 for RMS and the petty cash.
For CMS?
Yes. CHS and CMS.
CHS, CMS, what did I say?
RMS.
RMS, darn it, I missed it.
Because I think so, that's what I heard.
You almost got it in there, and you were so excited, she's like, all right. You have an extra $8,000 for RMS, that'd be great.
So this money is already budgeted for? It was in any extra money? And is this money only used to pay coaches?
Officials.
Officials? It's only used for that, it's not used to, oh, I need two more pieces of equipment, or I need to run out and get snacks, or I need to get, it's only used for that.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah.
We're talking about the petty cash fund that the school has?
No, the athletic one.
The athletic one?
It just seems like it's a big increase, like, and this is, we've only done fall.
Well, she writes down that it's an increase to, for the purpose of making certain that she can pay the officials in time to bash it.
So like Charlie said, I think it's within budget, it's just a cash flow issue, so she's wanting to enable it so they don't have to keep refreshing the petty cash.
Right, so... But I think Lisa was asking about the, are there other usages of it apart from this?
If it's a petty cash account, I guess would be that it could be.
It could be.
I'm sure it does.
It's a pretty substantial increase.
So that's not necessarily the budget amount, petty cash is a balance sheet account, so when she depletes the request she's had, she requests more, so it's not like that's all she uses her whole year. She just has to make more requests more often to replenish what she has so that she can write checks. Does that make sense?
It does, it does.
Like, in the beginning, rather than playing catch-up.
So she only has to make like three or four requests?
That's what she's asking for.
Instead of like eight, and everyone can get paid, there's no more money being spent, it's just like an efficiency.
Well, that's the key, nobody has to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, or instead of leaving officials, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it is, I will say, just on a side note, like, as Ruben was saying, especially for like meeting, having the officials there, and these officials do a great job, they really lend, like, these kids have never sometimes played in a basketball game, except a rec, rec game. These officials do a great job of, you know, refereeing to the level, right? There's a few travels that don't get called and things like that, and it really makes it feel like a real game, and that's what you really hear from the kids, it's like, this is a real game atmosphere. I know we're not questioning that, but like having those officials there, their uniforms, they ref it like a real game, you know, except for, they're high quality enough, I guess, that they recognize that, they call it to the level, so...
Well, and that keeps things safe, too.
Yes. Anyways...
Has the line item carried increased for next year? Has this, I don't know which line item it is?
It's not a budgeted item, so it's a balance sheet item, it's not a budgeted item. That's why I...
I guess I'm simply not understanding that.
Yeah, it's like a cash account is what it is. So when she depletes that amount, she submits a request to refill that amount, basically. It has a process that you have to go through. She submits all the receipts that she's used so that the money can be replenished up to what the board has authorized at a time.
Okay, so tickets pay for this, or what pays for this? Where's the money coming from if it's not budgeted?
Carrie, it's probably from a line item, if I'm correct, it's just not a separate line item. Right, it must be part of those sports or sports equipment?
Yeah, it's, well, we're paying the officials, right, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Give me a minute, let me see if I can pull up some information.
It was a budget for officials. The thing is, is that you can't put a check on a budget line item. You can't put a check on this invoice or a purchase order. Purchase order?
I understand that the petty cash doesn't have its own line item. I'm assuming that the athletics that this is coming from is a line item. She's saying that the cost for officials has gone up, is this reflected, so next year there's plenty of money?
That's not what we're saying. Would the, Mr. Dustin is listening, and says that he can, I think, provide a good explanation?
Yeah.
Would that be okay for him to be able to do that at this point in time? Okay, I'm going to try to see if you can hear from him. All right, Mr. Dustin, are you...
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the request that Heather's made here is specifically for the athletic checking account that's used to pay officials, which is kind of what Karen was saying, so there is a budgeted amount that's coming out of the budget for professional services for athletics, and either the middle school with the middle school checkbook, or the high school with the high school checkbook. And as Karen was saying, this isn't an increase to any budget that's being requested, but what happens is during the season, when we've depleted that account, we can't write any additional checks until the account has been replenished from the budgeted area and the budget, that professional services line. So what ends up happening is in the time between, when the account starts to drain and when we're able to get it replenished, checks start to back up, and we end up not being able to pay officials, sometimes for several days. And this happens even if, as is the case, Karen's very diligent about saying, okay, we're getting low, there's just a time gap where this, it takes time to get this done once the account is down, and we can't fill it past the maximum amount, so again, as the games start to happen, we always end up with these one- to two-week periods of time where these official's checks are just stacking up, waiting to be ran, and then all of a sudden, we get the account replenished, and she writes all the back checks, and we're right back where we were, it starts getting into this kind of cycle. So what they're asking for is to increase the amounts so we can stay ahead of that during these seasons, and we're not ending up in these timeframes where officials who do work really hard at these games are having to wait sometimes a couple of weeks to get a check mailed to them versus having it available at the game like we really should be having.
Thank you, David. One of my questions added to this, though, is that it sounds like one of the reasons that it needs replenishing sooner is because the cost of officials has gone up.
That's it, I just wanted to add that in, I thought that might be helpful, to give a little bit of perspective in terms of what it's looking like kind of on the ground.
Yeah. Is that cost increase reflected in our proposed budget in the specific line item?
I don't think he can hear her.
So I pulled the budget for next year and compared it to this year. There's an increase of $3,500 at the high school line due to additional JV teams, so that's what the description says. So that's what the description says.
There's nothing to account for in increase in paying officials, not that is described.
Described there, technically a formative, it's not checking.
Okay, are you good? Okay, thank you. And so we have a motion, and do we have a second?
My second, yeah.
Second, of course, I choose. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so that carries six here. All right, very good. And now we are on to our discussion around budget finalization. So we spent quite a bit of time on Saturday, getting, going through a presentation on budget, hearing from our administrators and team leaders. And now we're on to the next portion of our task. So how are we gonna do this? I am gonna count on the superintendent to get us started.
All right, so the first thing I'm gonna do is unmute, so that they can hear what we're talking about.
Good, good.
So, again, all my notes, all my notes are in a different place at this point, but I have enough in my, my mind. So on Saturday, we presented a initial budget that was significantly higher than what we currently are operating right now. So the history over the past several years is that actually we've done very well to keep the budgets either flat or a little bit higher, or sometimes even a little bit lower. Since COVID, things have gotten a little bit more tricky. Some of the patterns of how we use the budget had to be adjusted due to inflation, due to the decrease in student population in certain areas. Again, when you have a decrease in student population, if it's not all in one, let's say, let's say it's all first grade or all second grade, if they're evenly distributed across, you tend to, instead of have class sizes of, say, twenty-two, you might have class sizes of eighteen. That doesn't mean you decrease the number of personnel who are there. Plus, at the same time, thank you, at the same time when you're budgeting, over the last two years, you're budgeting during the highest rates of inflation we've seen, so as we talk about, seen, at least in my time in education. So it's certainly, there's certainly a bit of a number of years, a couple decades ago, where that was different. The, yep, thanks, the. The difference in the default budget from the current approved budget is five and a half percent. So that five and a half percent is certainly a lot higher than what I would want us to have between the default budget and the current, the previous budget. A lot of that right now has to do with early numbers coming in for both special education, which is actually what the bulk of it is, and also the increase in JRSSA per warrant articles from the year previous. Also increases to health insurance, again, our health insurance premiums went up, as did most other individuals or other school districts, they went up significantly less than a lot of other districts, whereas we might have an increase overall of a little over two hundred thousand dollars for those increases. Other places, we're seeing closer to five hundred, seven hundred, a million dollar increases as a result of the percentages. So we're pleased about that, but nonetheless, it is an increase. And when you add all of these increases up, plus the out of district placements for those learners who need something different than what we have right here in the Jaffrey Elementary School District, along with individuals who are here that were able to support them, but they need either one-on-one or group, paraprof, group-supported paraprofessionals and so forth, that adds up after a while. And so that's what really makes up that five point five percent increase. And for you, anyone else who's listening, a percent basically is every three hundred thousand dollars roughly is a percent. So if you have five point five percent, let's, let's take even this five percent, you're talking over one point five million dollar difference from what we're operating on right now to what the base operation we're saying we could, you know, that we have to by law be able to do next year. And of course, there are a lot of increases. Now, within that, Carrie's currently, actually Carrie and Sandy, both are currently looking into some other avenues or other bits of information around utilities to see if that can be decreased. There is current work right now looking at special education from a different lens, a way that we used to approach budgeting, say, you know, five years ago, when the patterns were very clear. We're looking at patterns again to see what our, our past spending was and what we're likely to be able to have surplus and not surplus. So we're looking at that right now to see if there's anything that can be decreased. Then after that, we have, so you have your default budget, and then you have the district's proposed or draft proposed budget. And that draft proposed budget is up almost three percent from the default budget. So, which you, which is, I mean, it's over eight percent of what we're operating right now. Now, that proposed budget proposes positions like keeping, we currently grant fund pre-K for two positions, and we need to be able to maintain universal access, we need to fund one of the classrooms, that's about a hundred seven thousand dollars. Another thing that is in there is we propose adding a math teacher for the high school. Because core courses, the classes are getting larger, more people are taking upper level math classes and science classes for that matter. And a couple of years ago, we decreased, but, you know, the population has increased with those taking that. So that's another FTE, or full-time employee. Another addition in there is the addition of a teacher for what we call the restorative classroom. If you were here Saturday, we would have talked about, we implemented a standalone program over at Jaffrey Grade School and the elementary school to keep, well, to best support our learners, people who learn in a different way, not in the typical classroom environment, but rather than sending them out to out of district placements, very costly out of district placements, and costly from a standpoint that they're pulled from their community and from their friends. Sometimes, once you get there for many years to come, that program has been highly successful this year. We'd like to expand that. It does, it is an initial investment. The payback financially, of course, is that we would keep learners inside the district and possibly bring some back from out of district placements. So we invest to try to slow the increases down, that's in there. Other things that are in that, difference between the default budget and the draft proposed budget are salary increases for anyone who's not in a collective bargaining group. So your teachers and the paraprofes, sorry, the support staff, anyone who's a custodian, a paraprofessional, a secretary or administrative assistant, those categories of individuals all bargain their contracts. Then the other people, those of us, some of us who are sitting here, your principals, individuals who, anyone who is not part of those collective bargaining agreements, we would have raises in there. Those raises are typically, in this case, they're lower than the increases that the other collective bargaining units have put forward, but they're in the ballpark. And then there's health insurance increases for those, those individuals, that's what makes up largely the increase proposed. And that's about, it's a little bit less than a million above the default.
Default budget.
There's another couple of positions in there that we put in, those, now we budget, we have offsetting revenue for those individuals. We started a childcare center this year for children of staff members. There's a lot of reasons, we won't talk about the, there's so much we could talk about about that, it's been highly successful that way. This is an initial year, you know, so we're, we're feeling out the finances and everything with it. But we put it in so that those positions, while that's an increase to the budget, and it does get recorded in that number, that we would have offsetting revenue because people do pay to send their, their children to this center. So if you have enough of the children in that center, you know, the idea, and we charge the right amount and so forth, the idea is that mostly you have an offsetting cost that way. However, it's still in a, it's still in the increase. So even though, if you had the offsetting revenue, it wouldn't impact your taxes. So that's it in a nutshell. We've, we're at a point where we need to, the board needs to say, hey, we've had our tax bills. This is what the community is saying, this is, we have to balance what the community's needs are, where the community can help support the school district, and then also making sure that we're supporting the goals and the continuous improvement of the district. So where's that balance? And that's our conversation tonight. And so what the administration would look for is we would request, give us some guidance so that we can go, and we already started, you know, going and looking at different solutions to trying to minimize some of these costs or change the cost. We might even, so we might even go and say, have, have conversations with other districts or anything like that to see if there's any cost sharing that can happen, all that sort of thing can take place. But we also, it's nice to have kind of a target as to what we should be shooting for in that sense. Other things to consider, we talked about also on Saturday was that we, the board and the teachers' association has come to a tentative agreement for another three-year or a multi-year contract. Now, that agreement, I believe, was supposed to be voted on, ratified, or not, by the teachers' association tonight. If that's the case, and it was, then that will come to the school board at its next board meeting, for the board to go through all the changes and then either accept or not accept that. That goes on a separate warrant article, that is not within this budget, that gets voted upon separately. So, but, we have to take that into consideration when making a budget, that there are other things that we need to look at funding. So that's kicking the conversation.
Okay.
Yes.
My two cents. We're certainly messing with default.
Okay.
Because default is prescribed by law. You start doing it this year, you're gonna have people asking you why and what you did, and then you can have it all into the future.
Okay.
The second thing is, we have to try and get proposed down below next year's default. Because that's what the voters are gonna look like, just like Tom said Saturday. Now, if you see a default, this list that are proposed, that's what's gonna get voted down, because that's what, you know, people vote for law, at least in Ridge, they do. So those are a couple of places I think we ought to start, and this is just my, my argument.
Yeah, I kind of, in your head, right, in my head, and in the past, I think, you think of like, well, we're gonna do a default budget this year, and that's like, not something that the school obviously wants to do, there's likely to, I think, some probably, you know, painful cuts. For sure, totally acknowledge that. With this year's default budget, you know, increasing by, you know, five point five percent, I mean, if you look at our history of like what we've done, even in our approved budgets, they've been, we, last year, we got like thirteen percent. Before that, it was like, I think the highest one was like three percent, of like an approved budget. So a default budget of five point five percent, you know, at that higher number, to me, just doesn't, I know, you know, we can go through the data, obviously understand some of the justifications, it just doesn't seem right. And I think your point about the, the teacher contract as well, that's an important one to consider, because that's also gonna be on the ballot, right? So when we're looking at, you know, possibly, hopefully, a very fair contract that we can offer our teachers, I think that's, you know, paramount importance, right, to keep the teachers that we have and be able to attract teachers in this environment. I think it's, to me, a, a top priority, and, you know, as far as the tax barriers are concerned, I am concerned if we have proposed, proposed a budget that is, you know, after a thirteen percent increase, another significantly, you know, five, five percent or more, and a warrant article, I think we run the risk of having them all voted down and then being back here. And having those hard conversations later, rather than, I think we can proactively have those difficult conversations now. It's kind of where I'm at. Align with Charlie there, I guess, I probably have a lot to say, but that's kind of where my head's at. I don't know if that can be done, right, but I think we need, in my mind, we need to do our due diligence to, to know whether that can be done. And we can get this passed. Certainly, I would never vote for anything that was, I felt negatively impacted our schools. But I think we need to be realistic about that. And I guess going over, right, we didn't, we didn't, maybe we did at the meeting, I don't know, it did go on for a while, but talk about the, you know, the, the tax rate increase, right? So we are talking about for the default budget, for Ridge, another dollar seventy per thousand, on top of the, the increase was like over maybe two dollars for the, for the last year. And then for the proposed budget being two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And that doesn't include, you know, a new, new contract, which likely be more than that. So maybe three dollar increase, I, I don't know, that sounds like, that's all, I mean, so for a hundred thousand dollar house, it's three hundred bucks, right, possibly? So for, I mean, there's no hundred thousand dollar houses in Ridge, right? So for, you know, say a five hundred thousand dollar house, that's fifteen hundred dollar increase. Right? Put it in that perspective, that's where I think that, you know, I totally agree, I love the presentations. I support all that, but I do think we need to kind of sharpen the pencils and figure out a way to figure out something that's gonna be best for the schools and palatable for the taxpayers and get passed, right? So I think it's like shifting those hard conversations to now versus in March, when everything gets voted down. It's kind of where my head's at.
Carrie, what was the current year rate, three oh two?
What's that?
The current year rate.
Current?
Current year tax rate for Ridge, the three oh two?
Do you mean, do you mean the current tax increase? Or rate?
Yeah, the rate increase between twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Three seventy?
Uh, school local. And that's the.
Yeah, um, have to pull it up, I don't have it. I know that this year it's seventeen oh eight for Jaffrey and fifteen seventy-one for Ridge, that's the local.
And it's fourteen fifteen.
And. In the proposed, it would be eighteen thirty-four and seventeen eighty, respectively. It's just, um.
Looking at the FY twenty-four. February eighth, twenty-three, first session.
So then.
I think Jaffrey went up, the school portion went up, what, two dollars thirty sets this year? And Jaffrey alone, I think, was around two bucks.
You might be including the state education, no?
Huh? No, I'm talking the town, the, the school.
Just the local? Just the local? So Ridge's tax rate is fifteen seventy-one this year.
Pardon me?
Ridge's local education tax rate is fifteen seventy-one this year. And Jaffrey's is seventeen oh eight. And then, I'll tell you what it was on last year.
Yeah, it was about two hundred.
Ridge was fourteen fifteen last year, according to that.
About a dollar.
A dollar sixteen. A dollar sixteen, you're all right.
And then...
So, I'm looking at the, um, revenue taxes proposed FY twenty-four. And at that time, we looked at an estimated tax, tax rate change of three oh five for Ringe. We're looking at a tax rate of eighteen fifty-one. You're saying that's now seventeen something?
Definitely the tax rate, that was, the, the budget that was voted on last year, the tax, the tax rate that we put down as the, um, you know, proposed, in a sense, kind of, uh, possible tax rate, the taxes actually came in lower than what, um, we had expected.
What we had estimated, right.
By a fair amount.
So...
And what was that due to?
Well, we did, um...
Well, revenue adequacy changes, yeah.
Yeah, we had different revenue adequacy changes, but we also provided money between six hundred plus styles and back to the, um, to offset taxes.
So you're saying the twenties period ones were tax rate was seventeen one?
This year, Ringe's tax rate is fifteen seventy-one, but prior to the year was fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. Jaffrey's last year was fifteen dollars and forty-one cents, and this year it's seventeen oh eight.
Does that include the state?
No.
So a dollar sixty-seven increase for Jaffrey. And what was Ringe's before the fifteen seventy-one?
Fourteen fifteen.
Fourteen fifteen?
Yep.
Kind of talking apples and oranges there. Because what they're gonna see is they're gonna see, taxpayers are gonna see, the school tax increase, both local and state. And when you strip off the state, okay, we're gonna tell them they're gonna get a lower tax increase than what they're actually gonna get.
So we don't have any control over what the state does, so our budgets impact the local.
Well, yeah, we don't have any... Okay, I'll strip that out. So, I don't know.
And the tax rates, I mean, it really depends on your property values. The higher your property value is, how less the tax rate goes. It's really bottom line, what you're paying out of your pocket, what that increases, because the tax rate's gonna fluctuate depending on the property values. It's what we're raising and appropriating, that we need to raise and appropriate.
I understand property values change. That's one of the things, positive things that help reduce the tax rate, but that's because of property tax base increases in the town.
I'm just putting that out there.
That would happen anywhere, that's true.
People understand, that's all.
The point is, that would happen anywhere.
I'm just making sure everybody under- stands that, but I know you do.
All right, let's see what I'm talking about.
You still have to raise the same amount of money.
That's whatever, yes, exactly. That's exactly it.
Values go up, the rate comes down, you're still spending the same amount.
And communities that have a higher tax base have lower tax rates typically.
Right. That's why I say the rate is an only factor that's working.
Say the town of Jaffrey had infrastructure that could have, you know, over the last twenty, thirty years developed, to be able to offset some taxes, you know, that could, that would be a good idea, but that's not gonna happen, right?
It's just gonna do this, you're ready, until it comes down to the bottom line dollar.
Yeah, exactly.
I have, I have a question about, on the, I know I already asked a question about the, on the default side, you know, Charlie said he doesn't want to change that, but as far as like the, the main drivers that are working in special education, it was the student services placements, as we discussed, and the eleven point oh, FTEs and student services, I guess. So I asked a question about the eleven point oh FTEs, looking at that. But as far as the student services placements, just so I understand, what makes them go into the default budget? Are they known student services placements that we're gonna have, have to cover next year, so these are known increases that puts in the default budget? Or are they anticipated? Like, what qualifies them to go into default? Because I mean, that's like, like I mentioned, this default budget, like I've been trying to, and it's, you know, a five percent increase, which is more than usual our proposed budgets are. So I'm just, I'm seeing the two, it's basically mostly student services, and I understand that there's gonna be more placements, but is this extra six hundred and forty thousand and fifty dollars, like, confirmed? People that are already placed and we know we're gonna have to pay for next year? Or are we anticipating it? And I guess what qualifies it to go in the, in the default budget? Because while I agree with you, Charlie, if we find out that something was put in here, like, in error, right? I mean, it came out at one thirty in the morning, and I'll just say that usually when I send something out at one thirty in the morning, sometimes there's mistakes. So I, I leave that caveat, and I'm not saying that there is, but, um...
Carrie, would you like to say something to that? I know you were under a lot of pressure, but I also know how you work, so...
Well, those numbers come from what Jen puts in the budget, so I'm just sharing the information. Typically, when it comes to the placements, it's what we know is gonna happen. It's not based on what we expect to be fluctuating, it's what we know, that's why it's going into the default. So I don't know if Jen wants to talk more about that, if she's listening, but it would be what we know is happening.
And that's what I would expect, and I'm just looking, being that it's, you know, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, I just wanna confirm that.
But I think that Ruben is probably gonna try and do that, but one thing I can tell you is that it, it's always the known and unknown.
I know.
Because, you know, someone can move in with, in April, with three children, who are qualified, or they can move out, and in fact, those things do happen. So the rules, the question you're asking is very good, the rules are pretty specific.
Yeah, that, I would expect. You can't, I, I would expect that you can't put that unknown in the default budget, but certainly you could put that in the proposed budget, which would be my, uh, my guess.
Well, interestingly, if you have people in town who are qualified for services and haven't identified, they do become a part of the default, as I understand it. Even though, you know, they might move out, which would make our floor a fire, much is set in stone, it's, you know, it's set in stone.
So the majority of, to answer your question concretely, the majority of those numbers are definitely, they're actuals, so they're known.
Yep.
There are in those numbers, a couple, maybe a few, a small few, who are in, um, we would be far enough along in process, or we have been in process of trying to find those locations.
Right.
That, uh, it's, it's not a hundred percent known, I guess you could say, a, a couple of them, but they're, uh, they're well along their way, and it's a higher percentage chance that that's gonna take place.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but each year we talk about warrant articles, and isn't one of the main warrant articles, we try to do to create a special education reserve for those cases where we have, um, surprise needs of extended, like, an extended amount of money? So I think that's, I think there's a separate place for, for that. My, my understanding is that the money that is budgeted here is money for kids that are actual, and that we have a reserve should there be surprise new things. Um, or, or planned, like, yes, most likely this is, this is coming, but I think that goes into a warrant article, as far as I know.
Yep, typically our warrant articles, we, you can fund them by raising and appropriating new funds, or what we've done with the student servicers, with our special ed fund, has been to take any surplus that we've had. I recommend this year that if we, um, have surplus left over, that the two warrant articles, one for facilities, one for, um, student services, that we fund not by raising new funds, but by utilizing funds that have already been raised, if they exist.
And I would oppose that, just so we can understand, you know, the rationale for doing that is to say, if you have a surplus at the end of the year, these are the things we're gonna spend on. And you've got two risks there. One is no means no. The other one means that you don't have that money at the end, or it means that you have the money at the end, but you can't use it to want to, because you've already committed it to a warrant. So, I think the higher risk can be there.
Again, just going along there, just along with the tax rate, and as far as like how we evaluate the budget, I guess, I can, and going back to what I was talking about on Saturdays, to make the connection to like enrollment levels, I think that the metric of the cost per pupil, I think we should, we should know that for, for both of these proposed budgets, so we can evaluate that as well, right? We know we've, we've been excellent, if you look at that history, right, of keeping that cost per pupil, you know, below inflationary levels. I, I took a look at it, you know, trended over the last eight years or whatever, and basically, you know, we've, we've kept that cost per pupil below what would be expected of inflation, so relatively flat. I'd wanna be able to evaluate, you know, these proposals, but the default and the other in the proposed budget on a cost per pupil basis as well. Like, are we going from eighteen thousand dollars a student to twenty thousand dollars a student, uh, higher? I think that's an important benchmark that we should at least know before we approve.
So the conversation, just so to, so that we continue the conversation, the conversation so far is to, that we have two individuals who have largely spoken with, um, suggestions that the target area should be, um, correct me if I'm wrong, was at or below the default?
Yeah, I, I guess honestly in my head...
You're talking below default?
Yeah, it's a solid, but I'm still confused about the numbers.
The tax rate.
I really need to understand the numbers better, because if I look at this, all right, our local school tax rate's gonna be eighteen oh two, and it was seventeen fifty-three, so we're talking roughly about a forty-nine percent increase, is that correct? And you've got a state increase of one eighty-nine. And if you've got a total increase of two thirty-eight, and a state increase of one eighty-nine, that only means forty-nine cents for local school.
That seemed right. Was that for the default?
No, that's twenty, uh... That's twenty-four, twenty-five, estimated revenues and assessments.
Okay.
Your proposed.
So I think that is what Charlie and I are kind of saying is...
If it's forty-nine cents, I mean, we got a big story to tell, the state's reading you off, you know?
Which, which one, what are you looking at?
I'm looking here...
Because I, I show the increase for the proposed being a dollar twenty-six for Jaffrey and two oh nine for Ringe, for the local taxes, based on this year versus what's on the estimated revenues and taxes.
I'm looking at what was handed out.
Right, it should be the same thing.
What, what's the title of that document?
It shows eighteen thirty-four for Jaffrey and seventeen eighty for Ringe, as being the local tax rate, the estimated local tax rate.
Local school tax rate, I have eighteen sixty-two for Jaffrey and eighteen oh two for Ringe.
What did I choose, maybe I changed mine?
Did I see something different on the, this?
I think I was playing with mine and updated.
Okay.
Some stuff, hang on. I pulled up the one I sent you, sorry.
There's a big, there's a big difference there. And you need to understand whether that's true or not, because if it is, we've got a great marketing tool that tells, tells everybody that, you know, three quarters of your tax rate in case you stayed, it's not local. I don't think so either, because that's what the numbers are.
Again, I guess, I think you were trying to get kind of Charlie, Charlie and myself summarized opinion, me and Charlie hadn't talked beforehand, but I, I think what we're both saying is that in order, I think, in order to give this a, a good chance of passing, and give the teacher contract a good chance of passing, right? Which I think is, again, a big minority. I would think that, ideally, in my head, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say kind of what I'm thinking without knowing if it's even possible, right? I think, just, to be able to, to make sure it gets supported, if that, the total of both increases was around that default number, unless not the fault number, I think that the teacher contract becomes increasingly likely to be supported. If you understand what I'm saying there.
So, just for clarification, are you saying, I, I think I just heard something different. So, you're saying that the total of both increases, and what you mean by both is you mean the teacher warrant article and the proposed budget? So for, is that what, is that what you just said? I don't know.
I thought what you said was that in order for the one, the teacher to go through, that the proposed budget needs to come down below default, to keep the teacher wanting to get, to go through, pass it through.
I don't know, it's just, tell, tell me I'm wrong, tell, tell me...
Yeah, well, that's what we, that's what I originally heard, but then I wasn't sure if you were saying that the amount to go below the default from the, you know, proposed default should align more with the increase of the teachers, um, contrary, is that the idea?
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I thought, that's what I just thought you said, yes, that's what I got.
I mean, and that was honestly, again, I would never support something that I thought was gonna harm the schools, but it, when I was thinking about like the, the process, and again, looking at it in the context that we got, like a thirteen percent increase to the budget in the last, the last go-around, right? That was a significant increase, and deserved, and due to inflation, but...
Well, due to an inflation and having the default, so you're giving two...
Yeah, two things combined, I totally understand. And I also think that the, you know, the inflation, while it's still here, right, I don't think we are in the last ten months or so, we're not seeing the inflation increase by the levels that we have the last three years, that's just a fact, right? So, I'll stop talking now.
Can I ask a, a similar but different question? I don't, and I hope I'm not muddying things, but I just need some clarification on the paperwork. I'm looking at two items in particular. One is the FY twenty-five budget overview proposed PDF that was sent, specifically the final number of the operating budget of thirty-three, three-six-zero, two-five-nine at the bottom. I'm comparing that with the line item historical data for twenty-four, twenty-five proposed. Am I not supposed to, because there is a big difference in those two numbers?
Well, the one, the overview has the food service and the grant revenues. The line item detail just has the general fund.
Okay. All right, so there's that, okay.
So there's, so there will be a big difference, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I wasn't here last year for the last budget increase. How did the, the public feel, feel about that at the town meeting or whatever?
Well, to, I mean, so we went, we really need to talk about two years before, and then that leads us to last year's conversation. So, two years before, there was an increase, um, obviously we had some high inflation, we posed an increase of, that was clearly going to result in quite a tax jump for one of the towns.
Yeah.
The reason why that was gonna be a tax, tax jump, I mean, that's every one, for one of those two, two towns, is because the, um, the... for one of those two, two towns is because the, during COVID, the numbers of learners from one town in Ridge decreased by a lot. And so the eight, the funding formula shifted about how kids were going to be paid. And so where, um, Jaffrey was going to have a hike as a result of that. So we got the default budget, there was a bit of a campaign to turn the budget down to have it, so we, we were on a default budget. We took care of that. We had to restructure some things, all that kind of stuff. So next year comes into play, we have now, uh, that was a very difficult financial year. We did get by, cash flow was at a bad spot, and we were pushing it to the end, but we were, we were able to make it. The next year, we first had that level of inflation plus the next level of inflation, so that goes in there. We were able to, um, you know, put off some things, buy some things a little bit sooner perhaps that we were able, you know, it was good, so we were able to take that budget down a little bit, but, but still at a fairly significant rate. And that was going to have that increase, which of course it did, actually didn't increase as much as we told. Yeah, and we definitely broadcast it, we sent information out to all households a couple times about that. We were very happy it passed, certainly. And part of that is because, you know, when you're in a, you have another situation, you're not just a budget, but you're in a, um, job market that is very different than it was even four years ago. And so if your community, if your school, in this case, schools, if your school is perceived as not being stable, if it's seen as a place that, oh, if I go over there, am I going to get rift or a cut or whatever like that the following year? Is a contract going to pass or is it not going to pass? People are going to look at that prior to saying, hey, I'd like to go there.
Yeah.
And we know that when the fall year happened, that we had several people who indicated they wanted to apply and said they just couldn't take the risk. So having two years of that in a row would have hurt, hurt us. Every school was being hurt in that respect. We're a little bit hurt, a little bit less right now because we've, you know, been able to maintain our, maintain things in a, in a fairly decent way financially and expectation-wise and curriculum and so forth moving forward. Not perfect by any stretch of imagination, we have a long way to go, but we're moving in a good direction. So people voted for it, and again, the taxes did come to be less than what we forecasted, but they are what they are. I mean, people are right, five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars, a thousand dollar increases, those are horrible. It's, it's absolutely, this, this, it's terrible, that's the case, but I understand why people are angry, and they have the right to be upset. Yeah, so at the time, I think people were pleased that it passed. Um, I think that time has passed.
Right.
I, I mean, at the same time, we know that although there's not going to be any relief in any time future, that again, we have another court case that's showing that the state is not funding the school systems, that's right. And they're do, and the state is what's, because they're not holding up their constitutional obligation, they are hurting the local towns and specific, specifically certain types of towns.
Right.
So it's, uh, there's a lot going on.
Well, that's, that's good, that's exciting, so, um, yeah, I was, for one, for someone who has very little experience with, from, um, since school budgets and stuff, I see budgets for government projects, but that much of an increase, I was a little surprised at first, but getting to it, I understand where it's coming from. So I, for the default, I would be more towards sticking to that, I see why the proposed is, is, is more. I would love to, I would, would love for all that stuff, but to present to, um, the public, I would stay more towards the default. Less other things for that.
Default right now is probably about, um, especially two hundred fifty-three, I don't know. Because it doesn't include salary increases.
It, it does not include the teacher salary increases, that's correct.
So we're talking roughly half a mil.
It might be four hundred thousand dollars lower than, yeah, and, and if that's the, if that's.
If it's four hundred thousand, just track that up and add that, give it two fifty. So, it's, it's probably the.
Yeah, I guess, I do want a lot of people to talk, but I do have some things, you know, I feel weird, you know, I'm asking guts with them also kind of saying what I feel are priorities, right, but this is kind of the process.
Yeah, no, it's good.
So to me, the pre-K program, we have to find a way to make that work. I, I, I think that to me, based on all the things we heard before, like continuing that pre-K program is, in, in my mind, the, the top priority of all, of all the things we listen to.
I have a question with the pre-K programs, because I've had others in the pre-K program, which I don't want, um, you have to ask if they're in it. What's the reasoning, um, if we were to keep it, um, like there would be only the option for the full-time four and a half days, right? Is that what the push is, what option, like it is worth to have that and then like a half, half pre-K?
So are, are you, if, yeah, so what we have currently right now, if two of the classes are funded by, um, S R funds, so if we were not going to find a way to fund those, we, and we have found a way to partially fund some of it already, but, but certainly a hundred ten thousand of it, right, we need to come up with. Then you'd have to either go, either not have those, you could go down to one full day, um, at each location like we were. I suppose you could try to half-day in each location, that doesn't quite work, the, you know, financially, because it's a little more expensive, but it's, you know, still around that. You could have one, you have two full days at, um, one town, one at another, so you could go uneven, you know, fund the place that maybe typically has the higher need.
But from here, Nathan, I think what we're proposing here in this budget is just to keep everything the same, but just now we have to pay for it, right? So the pre, the pre-K program remains as it is today, except now you pay for it.
There's a little bit of ignorance on it too, though, so what's the reasoning for the pre-K not having busing?
Expense.
Just the expense sort of.
Yeah.
But it was just, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, even in the default budget with individuals going to out-of-district placements, you know, part of that funding is transportation, transportation is very expensive.
No, I, I misunderstood, that's why I just wanted to.
That's why.
Yeah, okay.
Well, also because when you're talking about busing for pre-K, you're not talking about normal, the normal-sized buses.
Right, and that's why.
And you're talking strapped-in buses, and they, we'd actually have to purchase them, or have the company purchase them, and we'd have to probably do, have to.
Okay, no, I totally understand that, okay.
I think we need to focus on, um, student services. It's one of the fastest-growing aspects of our educational program, and it has, um, right now, it's, include everything, it's probably a hundred and fifty-five, thirty percent of our budget, and there is some, there is for opportunity there, according to Jen's presentation, about that, to why do we have so many out placements versus other districts, she didn't say versus a state, of course, those are twenty sixteen numbers, she didn't use the right numbers, but I think that what she's, she's doing is the right thing, we're headed in the right direction. If we're going to make investments, I think investments should be made in that area, and that's the highest proven cost there is, I think, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Curtis? I've been sitting here very quietly, listening to the discussion, and I don't, Nathan is new to the board, appointed by the board, and filling something in, I.
Fill in until the next election.
Okay. So I'm also new to this, I've been to one of the meetings on Saturday, and so I have no preconceived one way or the other, I think I expressed that on Saturday, that if I was a voter, you know, average guy sitting in a voting booth, I'd probably go to the voters. I asked for a line item budget, I don't have a lot of information that you probably have, I had basically what you in me on Saturday, and I poked around a little bit on the school's website, and I will also say that if you are above the default budget by any significant amount, you're going to end up with another default budget. Knowing that, you know, with my budget experience through town, the default budget has a lot of criteria that is not changeable. And not having the specifics of blocks within a line item budget to say, like, special services or student services or this or that, I can't really comment on where to take it. But based on the information that I got Saturday, and what I see out on the website, a couple of things popped out at me. One, the eight-year history, I think Mr. Radick mentioned, you know, in, in basically two years, it's grown up twenty-three percent in our budget, which is significant, I mean, significant. And is the improvement, is that increase made a lot of improvement? Yeah, okay, you know, I don't disagree with the pre-K, you know, if you start teaching kids early, that's always good. But if I go out to the website and I just use Ridge Memorial, the, let's see if I can get it here quickly. And I go down to academic growth at Ridge Memorial, which you have one of these programs in, it's declining. It only gives a couple of years, but it, it, you know, if the E L A and the math, you know, in twenty-one, it's in COVID, but in forty, twenty-two, it was forty-four, twenty-three, it's forty-three, you know, the math side of it, in twenty-two, you know, was, uh, forty-six, and in twenty-three, it was thirty-six. So is the learning, early learning program really working? I think her data that she showed on Saturday, you know, it looked pretty good, it was a good sales pitch for the program. I do believe that, you know, the earlier you start teaching kids, I mean, my kids were very fortunate that we were very active in trying to teach them this stuff. And, but I can't comment where you go looking for your savings, because I don't have the detail enough, only based on the, you know, the six hours on Saturday and this meeting tonight. I think you're headed down a very bad path, and, you know, we had a default budget, and coming from a business environment, you know, if you've got a default budget and you made it work, that means you had enough money. And now, a year later, without a default budget, we're twenty-five percent, or twenty-three percent more, it's kind of making me question, you know, where is the spending going? And, you know, I, I, like I said, I can't tell you where to look, but, you know, a two million dollar increase in one year is pretty significant. In any business that's out there in the world, you're just going to say, where is that coming from? Do I have the sales to support it? And, you know, in the school district, it's not a sales thing, it's a service thing, and, you know, are we giving services that, um, have a value of two million bucks? I can't answer that. You know, my kids are grown and schools are important, but at what level do you balance those services? I can't say much more than that, I think. You know, in two days' time, it concerns me significantly that, um, two million bucks is two million bucks, and then, you know, you went from, um, twenty-five thousand, uh, basically twenty-six thousand, right, and twenty-seven thousand was your default budget, and twenty-two, twenty-three, when we ended the fall? Right? Last year was the approved budget. The year before was, it was, right? Am I wrong in saying that? Twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a twenty-seven thousand, million-dollar budget, and now we're at thirty-three and change. So in two years, we've gone up five million bucks, and so I'm kind of, you know, it's, and from a public standpoint, you know, I'm involved with the town pretty significantly, and it's, it's scary that there's not a single person here from the public to hear these numbers. I, I can't express that enough, and, and if it was me, when you present a thirty-three million and change budget, I would probably be advertising to vote no. I'm telling you, right? And I hate to say that, because the default budget doesn't do anybody really any good, but it's hard to justify the increase to the proposed budget, is all I have to say, you know, I, I don't know where to look. You know, I think, um, you got a million dollars sitting in the bank, if it was me, I'd probably be voting to put all of that towards your budget. If you really want the thirty-three, you can eat it, bring it right to where the fault by covering it with your, with your fund balance, you know, you got to keep five percent, um, by requirement, keep ten, you're still putting nine hundred thousand in towards the budget going forward. It's, it's pretty, no break, you know? That's it.
So it is our expectation for tonight, I know there's budgets finalization, or you know what that's about, too. What's the expectation for tonight as well?
My hope is that, um, there will be a direction that the board would like, um, to, us to move toward, um, recommendations of, for instance, what I have now, and so I'll repeat what I think I'm hearing, is that, um, there is three priorities that we want to consider and try to hit those. Four, there's a fourth priority, but it's, the fourth priority is how we go about hitting it. And so one is getting a teacher contract passed. Two is, and we might differ on the order of these, but, um, maintain pre-K and keep that instead of, you know, we don't lose something that's, we actually for years have been trying to move toward. And then, uh, the third one was the innovation and investment in student service work that we've, um, talked about. The restored classroom and things of that nature, yeah, if possible. The fourth priority there is making certain that we can get all those to take place, or we're in the process of providing the community with a budget that they can support. So it's about public relations as well as it is about, um, and affordability with the quality or outcomes, you know, putting the money in the most important places. So if that's, if that's the consensus, then that's the target we'll go toward. What that will do, and, and also, Chris. What that will do, and also, Chris, if I can also maybe paraphrase something that you said and tell me if I'm paraphrasing it right or incorrectly or wrong, is if we have a proposed budget that's too high, you're going to get the default budget anyway. And so then you're in March or April or whenever, we're going to be talking about how are we going to handle the things at that point in time? In a sense, pretty much think about the fact that you have a default budget or less, right? And how are we going to handle those things and make those things take place in a proactive manner as opposed to a reactive manner?
That's exactly what I'm saying. And again, the default budget, as I said, that negative connotation, this is a default budget with a 5.5% increase, right? This isn't your normal 1% default budget, right? It's a 5.5% increase. So yeah, and again, I think we as a board would be doing you guys a disservice if we, you know, hacked up to it and said, all right, we're good. I think we'd just be, again, delaying the inevitable of like, in March, we'd say, all right, now how do we do our default budget? And is our teacher contract even passed? Do we need to revisit that?
I'd like to just add.
Carrie, speak.
Yes, that's true.
I'm just going to move these people over to you because they're having a hard time hearing.
Oh.
Can you get your video?
No, you can, you can go.
It's mostly just a comment, Chris. I wanted to make sure that, I know that you're saying, you know, come March, you, you want us to be proactive. A big part of our budget is staff.
Yep.
So if we cut staff to try and bring our budget down, that also brings our default down. So the gap between the two never shrinks because by law, we have to decrease the default by any staffing reductions we make. So I just wanted to make sure that you do that.
In the proposed budget?
Yes. Yes. So it's not always as easy to bring those two closer together because you also have to make the same reductions in your default budget if you're reducing headcount.
Understood. So you're telling me like, we have, if I look through the org charts, and I know the numbers probably, you know, changes day to day, there's like 11 vacant positions, something like that, right? If I were to suggest that, oh, maybe we decide that we don't need to fill two of those next year, you know, something along those lines, you're saying that would change the...
Default as well. We also have to take those numbers out of the default.
Okay.
So you're never reducing that gap.
Good to understand.
Yeah. So I mean, there's...
But you're reducing the money.
There's a couple of ways of, of approaching it. But if you approach it in the typical fashion, like what you just talked about, then what I would be interpreting is make the proposed similar to your default and your default lower to what you're talking, you want the proposed. I think it'll be very hard to flip the two.
Yeah, okay.
Is it impossible? Not necessarily, but it's...
It'd be very difficult.
It would be, it would be pretty difficult.
I, I understand what you're saying. And so, you know, that's, that's why I say something like, you guys can correct me.
I think another way to use, to use your...
We used to be able to make the proposed less than the default, but the law changed to make it so that you had to take FTEs out of the default if you took one of the proposed. And I didn't mean to...
Okay. No, that's helpful to understand.
That was helpful. And what I would say, you know, you were talking about, you have a default, but this is a 5.5% increase. If it were a 1% or a 1.5%, something with what you said, you know, that's a different story. And I think that with what Carrie's saying is that, and what I'm translating it into is make the default closer to what a normal default might be, if possible.
Yeah, I know.
That's another way of looking at it.
Yeah, I know.
I know that, and Charlie would say, don't decrease the default.
Because the lower you make the default, the lower your budget's going to be.
Right. And the default's defined by law, so we should do...
Yeah, I'm not suggesting to do anything, you know.
Well, except that, that's FTEs, that's people.
Yeah, correct.
So since we're having a little discussion on how you may approach this, I hear you say that the early learning program is partially funded already, which is in the default. Okay. So in order to expand that, you're putting additional funding in the proposed. Is it possible to put expansion of the early learning program on a separate warrant article for the school district? So that that funding comes out of your proposed budget, but it goes, and it no means no, and I get that, but it allows the voters to make that decision and not the school board. And the teacher's contract is going to add on top of it, and that's going to end up on a separate warrant article either way. But maybe some of these other particular things that are partially funded in the default already can stay status quo. But to remove from the proposed budget so that the voters make that decision rather than throwing out a giant number, you might have three or four different warrant articles to add funding. But your proposed budget looks much lower than your default. And it's just a thought, and I don't know how it quite works because I don't know what the details of each program. But it sounds like a lot of these programs are already funded partially and relatively successful within the current status quo, if you will. Let the voters decide. Because it's their pocketbook in the end. And, you know, you're adding, you know, $750,000 over four programs. Let them make that decision. You know, you want to add $150,000 to increase early learn, expand the program, you think it's good, go sell it. You know, student services or whatever, the STEM program or whatever, you know, you know, the project-based program, you know, they're all good stuff. I don't disagree. But let the voters decide.
What are some of the other strategies in light of what Carrie said, which we discussed last year? If we start trimming positions, we should bring the default budget down. But we faced that last year, and there were some things that were, that could bring the default budget down without... Sorry, I'm getting stuck here. There are ways to decrease the proposed budget without bringing the default budget down. We talked about some of them last year. I don't know...
Yeah, certainly anything that, I mean, one, you have to be... If you're going to pre-buy things, in a sense, that was a phrase that was used on the Saturday, it really needs to be, the, the money was approved for this year, you really need to get items that you're going to be utilizing this year. A tractor, you could utilize this year. So if you wanted to do that, you take, you can take that right out of the budget. There's 40 or 50,000 or something like that, that will be, you know, removed. And there were tech, technology items, you know. You want to be careful. You don't want to take technology out that you buy it too soon and then it doesn't function properly because of the constant updating and so forth. But there might be wireless access points, firewalls, things of that nature that are fairly expensive that you can purchase ahead of time.
You should go to the example that you gave, it is not, has been somewhat addressed by the manufacturer of Google because they had a lower time limit for updates. That was the issue.
Yeah.
Over the past 12 months, that policy has changed. So that's what we're looking at. My understanding is now more like six or seven years that they back those. And given the nature of the machines, they'll tend to last much longer than that.
Yeah. Fuck, max.
Look at that, yeah.
Sometimes in the past, we've done, we've looked at trends, and so we are, you know, we are looking at trends that, and so we budget based upon averaging as opposed to specifics and so on.
You had a staff member, if you take it out, you have to put back in. But the fellow was giving the math presentation, he said, you know, my priority is to keep what I have. But you're adding a math teacher, and his graph was nice for what I could see from over there. But he had, he said, these kids, and the tallest one, he says, these are going to end up over here, and this lowest one. But that's kind of more of a lateral shift because these kids are going to move forward. So this, this column's going to come down and this one's going to go up. So it's kind of a balance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think there were a couple of different items happening at the same time, kind of do with middle school increases and so forth next year that make it a little more challenging than this year because of how the...
His priority was to keep what he has.
Well, his priority was not, was to, above all else, please don't take anything else from us.
Right.
And so that was more of a, please, you know, we need to do this so we can function. If you want to function better in a, in a way that's going to help support learners more, especially in one of the historically tougher subjects for this particular school district, that we've had some recent success in moving forward. He was saying, let's continue that recent success. A lot of what we talked about on Saturday was, we're starting to have some success, especially post-COVID where things went the opposite direction, you know, or started to decline again. And we wanted to continue to do that.
And plus, as you just referred to, he's also pointing to changing conditions in terms of requests for advanced math classes. So what they're looking at in terms of requests for next year are not equivalent to the current year. So in a sense, if you stay with the same number of teachers, you're sort of going backwards. Who said, what I was hearing?
That's what he said, yeah.
Looking at the line items again, one of the areas where there's a substantial increase, and it was talked about in another area, is the upper grade Chromebook replacement cycle.
Yes.
And what I'm reading in the line items in two separate areas is that replacement cycle and new equipment technology would come to about 100 and nearly 120,000. Is that something that we can say, buy that now? You know, get that in place now, take this out of the proposed budget?
This one could ask Mike about that.
If, if you want us to explore that, we can do that and let me know if we can.
Yes. Like that to be explored. Student service. To, with the, I've thought a lot about warrant article for the preschool, which is something that we are so proud that we were able to make happen with the Ester funds. It's just...
What's that?
That, what your idea of putting the preschool and the, you know, and the early childcare into a warrant article, I think it'd be too little. Like, I think that the little amount, it's taken off of this $2 million, isn't going to make a difference. Like, I think it would be, I think it's a great idea in, in that we wanted this for the towns because they were asking for it. Like, it was the one area after the default budget that we saw. What do people need then? What are they looking for? And our early childhood programs had consistent, massive wait lists, and we've completely eradicated those by, by using Ester funds. And, and they've been full, and the, and the consequences of that have been tremendous for getting the kids having this early action. And so, you know, it's been a very, very powerful, immediate positive for our towns, right? But, and I would agree, if it was taking more money off so that it showed, like, the only reason to put it in a warrant article is to show the town not so big a number. But you're talking $200,000 off, if that. And so it's like, that, nope, the town's still going to see a really big number, and now they're going to react and not, not know what this amazing thing is and think that, think that it's superfluous, think it's an extra. When what we've seen is that, no, this is invaluable. So I...
Well, the research says it's invaluable.
It is, and I won't disagree. I think, but you're using it more as a sales tool. I see where you're coming from. But you're allowing the voter to see what it costs independently, and a voter who sees the benefit is going to vote for it, especially to people with children. But if they see a giant budget number, they don't see these little details like that program. And I, I don't disagree with you. I don't know what the additional money is that you're trying to add because I have very limited financial data, but it's, it's successful now with the current funding, and you're losing a part of it, and you're asking to replace that. And then the voter's going to have a decision. It can go either way. You can get a default budget and not get it at all. Or you can get the voters to say, you know, we're going to give you another 150 grand or whatever it is, you know, that's certainly, you know, put the penny, it could go either way.
But if we get a default budget and are somehow able to find this $200,000 to fund it, then we can do that.
Yeah.
If the voters say no to it, we can't.
If you get a...
So we, you know, I'm talking...
But you still have what you have. You haven't, you just don't have the additional funding to expand it.
Which is not enough.
No.
We're not looking to expand, we're just looking to keep it the same.
Well, he said it was partially funded already, bind the default budget. So we might get paired a little bit, but you still have the program.
Just thoughts.
Yeah.
No, I think it's important that, first of all, I want to, if it's okay.
Yeah.
I want to let you know I appreciate all of what you're saying because I, because you're very sincere. I thank you for being here. Pulling over, right? I mean, it is, we, you know...
They never thanked me in Ridge when I asked them questions.
You're not asking them, well, you know, Charlie certainly is aware. You're, you're making, you're making the statements based upon the information you know, right, or that you understand or that you're being able to infer through the conversations that you're having. And in the process, you're learning and we are learning at the same time, right? So the more we talk, the more we learn, and we do work together. So it's very helpful. And you're bringing, and you're bringing a perspective of a voter. That's important for us to do.
I'll ask a stupid question that I think I know the answer to, but I'll ask it since I've thought, since I've thought about it. For the, that, the early child learning grant, I'm going to get the name wrong, but there's been a few, like, sessions.
Yeah, yeah. I was actually at a conference today for the early child learning.
I'm assuming that can't somehow be applied to like a preschool program.
Oh, it applies, but it's just not...
But I'll ask that question.
Yeah. If we had had this, say, next year, then we could have...
The grant expired, the grant funds expired.
Yeah, we, we've got an extension on the funds, but they will expire, the funds that you're talking about.
Yeah.
They'll expire in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Figured you had thought about that, but wanted to ask the question.
Well, we can utilize, we're actually, within this month, getting together, a week together to rewrite some of the grants so that we utilize our funding a different way for the community based upon the information that we got. So some of that will help. Yep.
As a practical matter, you just need to keep in mind, in the ring, you're probably going to have about, 90% of the voters never see anything in the mouth pre-K. They won't get the delivery session, they'll show up with a check of the cheat list to how they're going to vote for whatever they're going to vote for. And that's what you'll do. The information you'll have is what's available on the board article and what we saw from the school district, other than that. That's why it's important to look at the numbers and see what they're going to vote for.
So this statement, I'm going to make a statement that this helps guide conversations. In the comments about what we think is most important, what I'm hearing is as we go to try to make the budget more palatable, the idea, first of all, there will have to be cuts and loss, that, that's completely going to take place. The, I'm assuming the board, and that, and some of that can be difficult, by the way, but I'm assuming the board wants to make sure that as much as possible, it stays further away from the classroom. If you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Direct impact, it does.
And I think all, all positions are important.
All of them, yeah.
All positions are important, let me state that first. But then, when it comes to tough decisions, you need to make a priority list, right? You need to say like, is today this preschool teacher more important than, I don't even want to say another position, right?
Yeah, not, not a good idea, yeah.
Right? But I mean, those are hard, hard decisions to make because every person is important and every position is important, and they all contribute to the overall education. But if you're forced to make that decision because, you know, state funding, you know, all this other stuff plays into it, but those are the, those are the cards that are dealt, right? right? Those are the sort of discussions that need to be had. Yeah, I don't, I don't like saying that. And I guess I'll also say that, like
I guess you're a dirt deeper than that. What's more important, exterior laws or
Yes.
Math teacher?
Yes, yes, all of those things, you know. And I guess I'll say too, like, in asking for this, I'll also say that, like, in my opinion, like, I would never support any sort of increase to our stipends, you know, I think it's, I would never support that, wouldn't take it, you know, and ask for this. It's a small amount, but to me, it represents a lot.
Can I just ask, in the line items, what is tuition LEAs outside of the Hampshire Local Education Agency outside of Hampshire? So it's student services related for, oh, replacements?
Okay, that sounds plausible, I've heard that, thank you.
I have a really simple thing. It's nine o'clock.
Sure.
And I was wondering if those taco pizzas are coming again. This is a serious discussion.
Sadly enough, I brought it home and I hate the taco pizza. I'll sit afterwards, but, okay. All that crap.
It's just like Congress, and I'd say we're making cuts, but we're getting ourselves a raise.
Did you want to, I have Jen, Deanna, Nikki, and David on here, and they've been listening and so forth. They have not actually asked to see, you want to hear it?
I think they're in line with what we're talking about, yes, they should get in.
They're the leaders of the schools where the majority of these funds go and so forth. So I, there is no force, I mean, there's a lot that's been talked about here, but if David, Deanna, or Nikki, or Jen, if you're there and you want to make a statement, you can just simply unmute yourself and start to talk, or you can text me and say, hey, I will be, and I'll help you.
Hi, this is David, and I just, if it's okay, wouldn't mind just making one statement.
This is David Dustin, principal of the Conan Middle High School.
I just want to state, you know, I've heard a couple of times, a statement being made or a concept being put out, that when we have a default budget and we do okay, that we didn't need the money, or that people might perceive that to be the case. And I just want to state again that when we were on the default budget a couple of years ago, the middle high school underwent what I will call a fairly traumatic and fairly rapid change to accommodate that, the effects of which we're still kind of feeling two years later. I commend my staff for what they did to accommodate to that, to make sure that we didn't have cuts at the K through three level where those would have been much more keenly felt. But I think to state that, or to even put out there this concept that, you know, we're like a business, and if we survived with a default budget, we really didn't need it, we should kind of go that road again, or could go that road again, I think does a disservice to what we had to do two years ago to make that work, and to the work that our teachers and staff do for our kids, sort of, you know, day in and day out to make sure our schools provide the best for what our children need. And I hear that, I'm a taxpayer, I got my tax bill, I understand the impact, I'm not saying that I think the budget as proposed should go forward, I'm just saying that when we talk about cuts of this magnitude, there is nothing that can meet that level except for us to look at our schools and decide what we can do to diminish positions to make that happen, and I think it's, it's much more than a, you could have done without it in the first place kind of a model or mindset. So of course, we as administrators will do what the board asks and what we think that, you know, the community is going to accept and things of that nature, but I want to be clear that it will, as it did two years ago, cause substantial impact to our kids and to our schools, and it's not something that's going to be, well, we just kind of figured it out, so we're all set. You know, we'll do what we have to do to make sure that everybody gets what they need here, but it's a pretty substantial issue when that, when that's the road we go down.
Nikki, Deanna, Jen, I'll just give you about 20 seconds, and if you want to chime in, that's fine, if not, no, no problem.
If this is Jen Carney, if I could just say, I just want to say a little bit about preschool. The long-term cost, risk, benefit for continuing preschool in the manner that we are, I just, I can't state how much you feel like that's important. I agree with Lisa that by putting it on a warrant, and I thought about the same things, also a taxpayer in this community, but putting it in a warrant article, I mean, have, say, you're going to pay $200,000 for preschool without understanding the long-term impact and the cost benefit of that. I think if there's a way for us to find different, different things potentially to, bring our operating budget down, but preschool is insanely important. And on a special lens, it continues to be important if we find children sooner, we can provide services sooner that cost less in the long run, if, should we keep preschool. So that's, I just want to be careful about putting something like that and what that would look like on a warrant article.
Thank you, Jen.
This is Nikki. I have a comment and a question as well, because I want to confirm that my, that my comment is accurate. I went to the impression that once you put something on a warrant, if the warrant is voted down at voting time, that then the contents of that warrant become sort of moot and not, you can't move forward with it in any way. So for example, if we put preschool on a warrant and the voters voted no for preschool, that preschool is essentially like dead in the morder. There's nothing else that we can do, even if we had on a side fund balance or miracle money from somewhere else, you still couldn't do anything with preschool because the taxpayers, the voters on a warrant have said no to it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the rule of thumb is no means no. So for instance, we tried to get a warrant passed several years back for, this is Ruben speaking, by the way, for the Jaffrey parking lot, and it was voted down. So we were not to do work on that parking lot, any new construction anyway, I think we were able to patch some things here and there, but we weren't able to do any real work on that parking lot, even though it was in desperate need of doing that, we had to wait to even do the dirt lot.
Thank you, Ruben. So then, I think my comment, I think my thought is that, there's been some comments this evening about voters coming in to vote, not being as well informed as we would like. So I think we have some work there to do, to ensure that they are as well informed as we can help them to be. But putting preschool on a warrant by itself and being concerned that they, that the voters may not be fully informed, I think is, will have a significant impact, not only on the youngest learners in our community, it'll have an impact on our families within the community. We talked at the weekend about offering universal preschool has given many of our young families, our families, the ability to go back to work, have two incomes, not paid for private preschool, so that there's a benefit not only to the, to our youngest children's academic progress, but also the benefit to the community. So I think that, you know, all the things that people have said about the power of preschool, I don't think anybody is disagreeing with. I think it has much bigger implications if we remove it from our budget or put it on
All right, thank you, Nikki. All right.
Can I respond a little to that, since I brought that up? I'm not saying put preschool on a warrant, I'm saying ask for additional funding to expand the program. Because you said some of its are refunded currently in the default budget, so the program will still exist.
Look, you could, I think it's the loss of grant money that we're trying to, is that right?
Yeah, so it would be, it would not be expanding the program. It would be, we have a program, we have it actually in a nice sweet spot right now.
Right.
We, because of the loss of grant funding, which is going to take place at some point in time, we didn't, we were hoping that, you know, inflation wasn't going to come the way it was, you know, that it has, and so things have gotten a lot more expensive. But we always knew we were going to have to have a bunch of conversation at some point in time, but we've got, you know, two, three years to do what our next step was anyway. So we're at a spot where we'd want to at least maintain where we're at, and in order to maintain, we would have to come up with about 110,000. With more than that, if we were able to find some of that.
If we were to ask for that 110, and it was not approved, I'm not sure how that
If we said we would be wanting to have, we need one more class, let's say, let's pick Ridge, right? We're going to have, we want to have, we'll fund the pre-K and Ridge. If the voters put that and said no to that 107,000, that would mean that you would not be able to put, even if you found the money somewhere, a pre-K.
An addition.
Or, or keep, keep it basically in that school, yeah.
But we'd still be able to run the rest of the program? Do you have enough information to go back and?
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's, I do have enough information, and we have some work to do. I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on what you see as, what you're valuing most.
I am valuing most that you please look at replacing what technology and what facilities pieces can be replaced in our current, with our current fund balance before any staff
So I'll say.
Okay.
Yeah, so whatever we're going to next.
So what we'll do next is, we're going to talk about policy. My second reading for all these policies that you've asked.
All right. What I want you to look at, people, is a second reading, FAA, annual facility, facility plan and unused district property. This is the one that is not required. Everything else except for one is required. I recommend everything else just go through. FAA talks about this idea that if we do not have a yearly plan, then if there's a two-year gap, then any charter school can say, well, we would like to use that, you don't have a plan for it. Now, again, our facilities are pretty used, right? The facilities that we actually have are pretty used, but we do have a property that we, for years, haven't had a written plan for. Even if that plan is to make sure we go board watching on it, or make sure that whoever's running ATVs have really quality vehicles, I don't know. I'm actually, I want to recommend editing this policy to include the word property. So right now, the policy, right now, the policy says that the school board shall adopt and approve an annual facility plan by June 1st of each year. The facility plan shall be developed and drafted, and it shall be proposed to the school board for common adoption at least 30 days prior to adoption. It talks a little bit about the contents of what's owned, and it uses the word facility. I would like to, after each word facility, have a slash with the word property after it. I don't know how much that protects us, but at least it mentions that we are planning for both our physical facilities and our land. Does that make sense? So you're not impressed, because you were in the
Yeah, yeah, I think I've probably said it at a previous meeting, so I won't say it again, but at the law conference, right, I asked that specific question, whether the policy applied to property, like spoke, speaking of our property on 202, they said no, but I think it does no harm to put it in this procedure just to protect us. Shall that policy change in the future? Which, you know, who knows, right?
Our schools need to build.
Yeah, so, absolutely.
So then I would like to recommend all the policies listed for approval as amended.
Now, we don't have our projector in front of us today as we normally do, so if everybody know, everybody have the list, or has had a chance to take a look at it?
I did take a look at everything. I'll move to prove everything as amended, or as amended.
Good, good. Lisa, in the, the BEDG, the meeting minutes policy, right, that's another, like, change. In the policy, it lists like two different options, like in the template. I don't know, it doesn't look like we chose one in the
It's like the meeting minutes.
Right? It gives us options to review, whether we delegate to, you know, whether we do it ourselves, whether we allow the superintendent to delegate it, whatever the case may be. I think that, if you look in the back, it says two options. Option one, procedures. Option two, no specific procedures. So I think we need to, before we approve it, need to decide which one we're pursuing.
I think this just talked about the seal, I'm not seeing, all right, two options. One with adopted procedures and one with not. I'm going to, we don't generally have procedures attached to nearly hardly any of our, any of our policies.
I know, but what I'm saying is, in this policy, it lists option one or two, and I think the intent is that we choose one and edit the other one out.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to recommend that we edit out the need for procedures.
Okay, so where is that, what number is that on?
That is BEDG, meeting minutes, and on page seven. No, page six. Eight, nine, how tall are you?
It starts on five.
All right, starting on page five, two options. This is for procedures for reviewing and unsealing previously sealed minutes, that's really what the edits are. Generally, we don't include procedures in our policies.
Okay.
So I would say that we would choose the option with no procedures.
Option two.
Option two.
Okay?
Yeah.
So motion stands of approving all policies as amended.
Yes, I get to move that. Just one second, I just continue moving forward.
One second, yes, okay, thank you.
So Lisa moved and made the second. Are there questions or comments about any of these?
Yeah, I had another one on the nursing mother's accommodation. There's some language in here, and I think it's where we have a choice to make. It says students and employees. I guess, thinking about that, and I think the, I think it's required for employees, it's an option, right? Here's another choice, but we have to decide to edit it or not. Whether we want to include this for students as well. That's a bigger decision, I'm not an expert on this, and honestly I think that's a bigger decision, and I'm, I'm not an expert on this, and honestly, don't have like an opinion either way, other than the thought that maybe it's worth an additional discussion if we include students in this sort of policy. And again, not speaking for or against it, just like, is it maybe worthy of at least acknowledging whether we're going to be providing, uh, time and place for students to nurse within school.
I think, you know, with this, what, like, this is a lawyer-based one, so I'm not sure we do have choices in this one?
No, you do for students.
You do? Let's keep it.
Uh, I would, I would say that that child would, or that student, that learner would be able to get a 504 pretty easily to be able to access the curriculum and so forth, in that would, this type of, um, accommodation would be helped. There's no way that I would not allow for that, uh, so I would, I would promote this if that were to take place, so I think it's perfectly fine to have them. Um, learners, all, anyone, anyone who has a child, who wants to nurse, needs to be able to do that, and we need to provide a place for that, um, within our school system.
Yeah, again, not, wasn't necessarily.
No, it's okay.
Opposed, or agreeing with it, just thought it was worth.
Saying that there's options.
I'm saying I like to.
An additional discussion.
Did you, did you see, also further down, I don't know if this is also part of that, but a nursing mother who has an hourly employee, you choose one of two options. Option one, to go stay in there and you choose later, or is that what it's saying, is to choose one now? Will not be paid during nursing periods, or two, will be paid during nursing periods?
I think we need to choose.
Are we supposed to choose that one too, Lisa?
I don't have it in front of me, so I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mine's about to die too. It's down in like C, page. I, yeah, page, oh, it's page two.
I don't know that we should make that, I think we should leave it as is, and talk with HR.
Yeah.
I think we should leave it as both options are here.
Oh, right.
And we should talk with, yeah, and that should be in HR.
Absolutely, okay.
I don't remember that we need to set that in the policy.
Okay.
Isn't, I guess a question, is this specifically only for nursing, or does, does pumping not fall under this?
No, pumping's in there.
It is?
Yeah. I just saw it. Including the shared, oh, sorry, including the shared breast pump, no idea if I mean this, but. Maintain the nursing area, wipe down surfaces.
All right.
So it does include the pumping.
Now I have to stop.
It'd be the same thing.
So all of the parents are hourly employees, correct?
That's correct.
All right, I would like them paid, should they need to nurse. Is that something we can decide?
The board can decide that.
All right, then I'm going to say that we want the option for parents to be able to be paid if they have to nurse a baby.
So that's option two, will be paid during nursing periods.
All right, so that's the option.
Nursing mothers, she'll not be required to make up time related to the use of unpaid nursing periods. The option one would have been not being paid during nursing periods unless either the nursing period falls during a regular paid break, or she is not completely relieved of duties during the nursing break.
Confess, I'm, I confess that I used to promise that that's an option. I, I guess I read through that quickly, I didn't realize this was only for salary, so, right?
Mm.
Huh.
There you go.
Yep, salaryless staff get paid during that timeframe, it makes sense to be equitable.
All right, sorry for the last minute change, are we in consensus with that, or do we want to take this privately and discuss it separately?
Okay, I could, I could. Okay, yeah. Option two.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Do, do we have a district-provided hospital-grade lactation pump for shared use? I'm just saying, if we're going to put the policy, we should know what's in it, right?
Yep.
Do you have that? Because that's what we're saying we're going to have now.
Well, we're saying we have a space, we're saying that we have to provide the equipment.
Item five says, we'll have a district-provided hospital-grade lactation pump for shared use, we can delete that.
Sure, I'd really.
Hold on. Oh, yeah, so the shared, right, right, it does say we'll provide the pump, because even the bottom, where it says nursing mother's responsibility, it says her responsibility is to clean the area, including the shared pump.
Okay, but edit it out.
I don't know, we want the shared pump, I mean, that sounds.
If we don't have to have that by law, I think it's.
We can take that, but it's in there right now.
I'd like to go for that.
I mean, I do think that we do have, I know, whether it's hospital-grade, that's a whole different story.
Current list is optional.
Yeah.
I think.
So we said.
We have.
So item five, we're not doing.
Uh, we were, item five, optional.
Yeah, it's optional, we're not.
Hospital-grade, correct, so then that means down further, nursing, nursing mothers.
They had to update that, yeah.
We can get rid of the including the shared breast pump, thing too.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, I will re-edit this for Juno.
Yeah.
So that that's really clear.
Yeah.
Those, that is.
Recast, recast.
Okay, and so, the motion is understood to include the removal of that statement about.
To amend those and keep option twos and amend that, yeah, so, no, we're not.
Okay, and but it's, fair enough, for the minutes, I'm, I'm going to take what it is, we're gonna.
Yep, yep, and I will email Juno all the changes so that it's really clear that this is what the policy is going to look like.
Okay, so everybody's clear on, not only the policies, but the changes that we're making on this one? Ken?
Yes.
Yep.
Chris, thank you for catching notes, appreciate that, and thank you as well for all the work around these multiple policies. All right, so we have a, a motion, and, and so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Not opposed, abstaining, okay, so that's six, zero.
Um, who's second, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Nathan.
Okay.
Nathan, yes. Okay. And, uh, board committee updates, please, any committee that has met and has an update?
So I haven't gotten the schedule yet for any of my, um, board committees, um, Juno said, um, she was going to send me some, but I haven't gotten anything, so pending those meeting advice.
Good, and there is a place on the board page where board committees are listed and there are schedules, but you're right to want to, the, the main thing I think you need to know is the chairperson, because sometimes those scheduled meetings do change. Usually if they're set for a given time, like the third, Thursday, at a certain time, they're usually pretty constant, but there's sometimes our changes that don't appear on the board page, so we'll pitch you the, uh, committee chairs, and that's probably the most secure way.
Yeah, so that's what else I was waiting, I was waiting up, um, forward for the committee chairs for, um, communications, Juno handled that one, and then there's two others that I was going to get the forward of, the people, so I haven't got that yet.
Okay.
So I can, um, so, yeah, obviously nothing new for me.
Okay, thank you.
Education meeting on the fourteenth at four thirty.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Facilities will be meeting on, uh, two weeks from today, on the Monday, the eighteenth. That's a ten thirty. But if nobody, uh, if there are no other committee updates, then that's fine. We've been busy with, uh, with budgets and finances, so.
There is no policy meeting this week, it's going to be the first week of June.
Yeah, first six months.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
First week, so the fourth? Lisa, that'll be the fourth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
Uh, we're ready for our second public comments session? We, we don't have it online audience at this point, is that right?
Uh, I see Jen, that's it.
Okay. So I know Jen is a member of the district, and Mr. Coie, and, uh, anybody here present have a public comment?
Pizza next time. Pizza next time.
Pizza next time.
You're bringing it, is that what I heard?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you want to get into that conversation, but we actually talked a little bit about those issues. Okay, very good, so, um, board matters, board motion. Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ken. And.
Let's go, Charlie.
Thank you, thank you, Charlie. All right, all of those are.
Aye.
Aye.